Special.
Our special city council meeting, city attorney to order. Everybody.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, council member. Councilor Powers. Councilmember Piler.
Here.
Mayor Morton.
Yeah.
And absent is Mayor Pro Tem Cooley.
Next we'll have public comment. This section is intended for members of the public with an opportunity to comment on any subject that does not appear on this agenda.
Looks like Ashley Sims.
Good evening. I wanted to call to your attention that I have asked numerous time for numerous times for the the documentation regarding potential conflicts of interest that are issued in writing and circulated to all members of the city council from the city attorney. Your policies manual states in session B on page seven. It says the city council has adopted a practice that advice provided to members of the council or commissions regarding the conflicts of interests are to be issued in writing and circulated to all members of the city council. The rationale for this policy is that the city attorney is employed by the entire council utilizing taxpayer funds. The findings of the attorney therefore should be made public. And I would like to bring that to your attention and I would like that records request to be fulfilled. Thank you.
I think Susan just has a point of clarification which is allowed during public comment for that particular topic that's already been addressed.
The city attorney has been asked that question twice and has responded the same way and then Ms. Sims has been given that response twice. Her request has not been ignored. He said that he had nothing that was responsive to her request.
Okay, I don't see any other public comment. I so you may want to just let Ashley know that she's already had a public comment period, her hands back up, but you don't get multiple bites at the apple.
Okay, Ashley, you've already asked your question and it's been answered.
Okay, I don't see any other public comments.
Okay. Communications, city council. Councilmember Powers. I'm trying to remember what our last meeting was. No, I think I'm I'll pass for tonight. Okay.
I have nothing to report except I'm here tonight for the special meeting and wish everybody happy holidays.
Okay. I have been busy. Christmas in town this year. It'll be Friday the whatever that Friday is. Check to make sure.
Second, it was the second, I believe. Yep, same.
December 2nd. The chamber is going to have vendors and things in Commercial Street parking lot, trying to put together a parade and pre-living and so what was what? What, how many council members want to ride in the parade? Come on, you guys, get in Christmas spirit.
Doesn't the mayor historically follow behind the equine with a shovel?
No.
Okay.
Supervisor.
Okay.
Member Kerry Swafford. Okay.
I guess so. That's a maybe.
Yeah, I should be here, but I might be helping with the items going on in the festivities, so I don't know if I'll be in the parade, yeah.
Okay. Taking care of the Angel Tree programs up and running. We'll put Christmas trees up with angels on them this weekend. They'll be here in the city at the Co-op, 7-Eleven, Bloomsburg and others. We've got all our little angels made. Hopefully, we're gonna do a good Christmas and Angel program. Okay, moving on, committee reports. The Fox Fire and Lock Committee has a report that's on the agenda. Okay. That's what it was. Okay, resolution number 2532 concerning public remote meetings. Review resolution number 2532, which revalids the proclamation of a state of emergency and reauthorizes remote teleconference meetings of the legislating bodies of the city of Portola. I have two comments on this.
Okay.
Leader from Leah Turner.
Yeah, so we did have one public comment by Leah Turner and you guys do have the have the the letter. She has to have it read into the minutes, but the minutes will just represent that there was a letter submitted. However, this was the the text of her letter was posted posted online for the public to see.
And as she we insist on hiding behind closed meetings. And it was obviously at Beckford Fire Board is meeting in person. But Mr. Plumas is meeting in person. The hospital is meeting in person. I realize that some people are meeting in person and I myself attended the Beckford Fire Board meeting. And their room is bigger than ours. They have tables out and you can sit spaced. We're not sitting next to each other or anything in there and I feel safe going in there. Some places I don't feel safe and she mentions that I went to the forum and Bob and I sat on Linda Cooley and John was there. Yes, we I did go to it. We did not wear a mask, but we sat in the back row. We sat moved our chairs back a little bit. We were not sitting next to the people that I were around us with people I knew that had their shots and I felt perfectly safe sitting there. So and then she goes on to say that, well, she's bad. And and about how we don't want to deal with the public. I've said this before, I don't feel that our room is large enough to, she says, 10 people. I don't think we could do social distancing in the little bit of room like that there with 10 people. Put 10 people in there.
And if you want to point out, we do have one public comment by Ashley, but I don't know if the council, rest of the council wants to discuss.
Yeah, I have a couple thoughts as well. Right now, we have Tom Cooley out. Very compromised. Been in the hospital now for this is the second day this time. And, you know, from an operation, I was severely compromised last year. We are, we're just looking after ourselves as well as the public. And why take a chance when we don't have it? We will at some point open back up to any strange allegations that are made about this being for secret reasons or specious. I think. And I'm sure when Leah comes on board. I really congratulate Stuart for winning the election. When she gets on board, she can judge herself if there's anything that's secret and underhanded or anything else going on here. Those of us who've been here for a while will test in public any time anywhere that there isn't. So that's about all I got to say.
If I might add to that, just council member Piler. Reading the letter from Leah, it it really bothers me. It bothers me for the fact that I'll share this with the public. Two weeks, two and a half weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, I tested positive again for the second time, vaccinated and boosted. So the second time of catching COVID was worse than the first when it first came out. So I do want to mention that when this type of letter comes out and says that we are hiding stuff, we are not hiding stuff and I want to make it clear that the community's safety and their health is very important to us. So we're not hiding anything and I want to read a quote from her letter that she says, and those of us running for city council and the school board candidates were not social distancing. So I believe she was running for city council. Okay, yeah. She goes on to say we were sitting side by side and not wearing masks. So this letter that is presented to us this evening also states, and it's her letter, that states that she was also part of what she's pinpointing other people sitting in the audience. Okay, so I myself resent the fact that people always or people are trying to say we're hiding. We aren't. We were transparent. And that's what I have to say. With 10 years in it, I've never ever seen any whispering or hiding things, nothing at all over 10 full years.
Well. Well, and the only times that the city council meeting has ever been muted is when we go into closed session. And then we unmute when we come out and report the action.
There is a public comment, Ashley Sims.
Yes, Ashley.
Hello, I hi, um, I was wondering if you could actually read the public comment in its entirety. I haven't seen it, but I feel like the whole thing is not there. And when I'm finished with my public comment, please. So I wanted to know if this is going to continue until February 2023, when the state lifts the emergency orders. I don't see why this is still in effect. Every single governing body just about in almost every single body in Plumas County is either doing in-person or a hybrid of teleconferencing and in-person, except the city of Portola City Council, except during this Portola City Council meetings. I wanted to know if this is going to continue until then. And then also I didn't say that my records request was being ignored, just to clarify. It's just I've been given the answer no several times and I don't think that is appropriate. So I wanted to clarify on my public comment also. Thank you.
So maybe to address her, Ashley's wonderment if it's a that's up to you, Mayor, if you want to read it or if you want me to read it. Okay, I'll read it. And this, so this item is good for a month at a time. So every month we address this and consider the circumstances at that given moment when that's held.
Here, it's not a simple fact that you can get COVID and you can get over COVID as we all know. But I personally have had three friends that have died from the after effects of COVID. One because he never got his balance back. One because his motor skills weren't that good and one because of this breathing that affected his, one was very badly. And so, no, I have a real concern about COVID.
Senator Morton, I I want to say I'm with, I've lost family members to this as well. And it's not something that we should be debating whether we're going to meet in person or whether we're hiding stuff. That's not, that's not what we're here to do for the public and for the community. We're here to make sure that we instill and enforce safety for our community.
Okay, Ashley, I'm going to read for John.
Sure, and I I do you mind if I also share a comment from my my perspective? A few airport land use commission meetings ago, one of the commissioners was describing and comparing Modoc County to Plumas County and why we should be doing the same things in Modoc County. And it was not a good idea. Just as Plumas County shouldn't mimic themselves over some of Modoc County's decisions. Nor should the city of Portola be pressured to do the same thing other agencies in this county are doing that may also be wrong. The, this is a serious issue. I I don't know if the public realizes that we all would rather have in-person meetings. That's the conversation that is pretty robust when when we all discuss about this. We would, we love to have it in person. We don't like this. However, there is a good argument out and about in the nation that this Zoom type method actually opens it up for more people to join a meeting that's just more convenient. Going into the hybrid, it'd be really challenging. So we'll be talking about that probably down the road. It'd be really challenging to actually manage public comment through Zoom and the attendees through Zoom and public comment in person. It would be just as clunky as you see it in the other agencies of the county. So that being said, that's my comment and I will read this. I do want to remind us that we don't really have a policy of reading everybody's public comment, but it is the potential council member elects public comment. So I'll read that if you want me to.
Yes.
Public comment is from Leah Turner sent just the other day. I would like to address the COVID. I'm going to read this word for word. So if there are typos or anything, it's not me reading the type. It's just the typos. I would like to address the COVID-19 emergency proclamation regarding no in-person meetings. I would like to know why the council is still insisting on hiding behind it. Ninety percent of all boards, city councils and other organizations that have monthly meetings have gone back to in-person meetings, yet you have continued to reinstate it every month. Beckworth Fires Board is meeting in person and several of you attend those meetings. Eastern Plumas Fires Board meeting in person and some have attended in person. And the hospital has their board meetings in person as well. You have said in the past that you didn't feel the council members are big enough for social distancing. Chambers are big enough for social distancing. But I saw Tom Cooley, his wife, Pat Morton and her husband, along with John Kennedy, all at the candidate's night, sitting side by side with others, wearing no mask and not social distancing. And those of us running for city council and the school board candidates were not social distancing. We're sitting side by side and we're not wearing masks. I feel the council is hiding behind this proclamation because you don't want the public to see you and you don't want to have to deal with the public. By having your meetings via Zoom, you can mute speakers when you want and can whisper and talk amongst yourselves and no one can see you because you don't have a live feed. So I ask that you stop hiding behind the proclamation and start letting the public attend your meetings and start having some transparency. The citizens need to feel that our council is representing their best interest. I have never seen more than 10 people attend a regular meeting unless there is a topic that is controversial and you could seat people six feet apart if needed for social distancing. Thank you for your consideration, Leah Turner.
Okay, that will move on to resolution number 2532. Is there any discussion?
We have a first and a second. Roll call, council member Olds. Councilmember Powers.
Yes.
Councilmember Piler.
Yes.
Mayor Morton.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Cooley is absent. And Councilor Powers, you were the one that made the motion, right?
Yes.
And Olds, okay. Okay.
Moving on to item number five, consent agenda. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. City Council will act upon them at one time without discussion. Do we have any public comment?
It's like Ashley Sims has a public comment.
Yes, I actually didn't want to use this as my public comment, but I wanted to know if the public could comment after you guys have discussion. If not, I'll just do my public comment.
I didn't understand the question.
Say that again, Ashley. We don't understand.
Can the public please have the opportunity for public comment after you guys have discussed what's on this item and everything, please?
There's nothing.
No, on the first item.
Nothing's changed.
Oh, sorry, wrong part. So sorry, wrong part. Was not paying attention.
All right, well.
Thank you.
We'll keep you in our thoughts. Okay.
I move with the where's the we have someone who there's a doctor, so we should and
I was a first by Councilor Powers and a second by better.
Yes.
All right, roll call, council member Piler.
Yes.
Councilor Rolls.
Yeah.
Councilor Powers.
Yes.
Mayor Morton.
Yes.
And absent is Mayor Pro Tem Cooley.
Moving on, item number six, IMD rate increase.
Okay, so I believe Richard Ross is on on the phone. You'll probably want to discuss. This is, IMD has the opportunity periodically to request a rate increase per their franchise agreement. Their their franchise agreement stipulates that a max increase per year is 5%, which would not require a lot of additional discussion like this and sort of ministerial. In this case, this year, you know, we all have seen that there's been additional expenses on everybody in the world and obviously rates have gone up. So their their increase request is significant and it also includes last year or last increase, the council approved a 5% increase, but they asked for, I forget the exact figure, but seven point something. So the the difference was is always allowed to be carried over for the next increase. So this increase includes the that carryover amount that that they wanted plus additional increase that was created based on the formulas that's set forth in the franchise agreement. And of course, Tom Valentino is is here that knows much more about the specifics of this process. But basically, IMD is asking for a rate increase of just under 17%. 16.85. And the council, I'm sure there's going to be some discussion here, but the council has a few options. You can just agree to that rate increase. And we will, you know, start, they'll start the trading process and go through the public area and all that. Or you can just say, okay, to a 5%, which is what is stipulated in their agreement. I don't know if IMD would be okay with that or not. Or there's another option that's outlined in your paperwork too, that, you know, if after our discussion and we contemplate additional information, some figure between five and 16.85% that that might make sense and and fit for everybody. You did receive IMD dropped off the document. I'm not, Richard can probably explain why, but this this document was handed to you. It's also uploaded online, so the public can see it right after they dropped it off. The third page of the document shows that they did get a rate increase with the county because they also, you know, provide garbage trash solid waste service to the county and that was in July of this year and that increase was 8.91%. Incidentally, there's another Feather River disposal, which is basically a branch of what solid waste management. Huge company nationwide. They were also they also got a rate increase at the county Feather River, just to use these numbers for perspective. And their increase was 6.91, I believe. I'll double check. If I'm wrong, I'll come back. But 6.91. So the other garbage company in the county, I know there's differences with expenses and everything countywide versus city, but that company got a 6.91 increase and 8.91 increase from to Intermountain Disposal. And that was the information that that was part of the information that the IMD brought in for us. So that's a little bit of, you know, I guess, information to chew on a little bit while we discuss this. And I don't know if you want to start discussing something or if IMD wants to. If I think Richard Ross is on the phone, if he wants to. Okay. So Rich, Richard's on the phone and I just asked to unmute him. We'll see if the technology works for him.
Richard's here.
There we go. We got you.
Okay, perfect. How's everybody doing tonight?
Good.
Glad to hear that. So I wanted to touch base a little bit on those increases John was just speaking of. In Plumas County, the rate increases are done through a refuse rate index, which is based off of revenue. The city of Portola's rate increases are based off of the CPI of the Bureau of Labor Statistics, Energy and Information Administration, so on and so forth. The reason I submitted that to the council was to verify that we did indeed get an increase in fees through Plumas County in July, which is why you've seen the two different increases for the tipping fees at the Delaware Transfer Site that the city of Portola Division has to pay Intermountain Disposal County Division. So we wanted to show that that was approved based off of those increases that you did see or you just heard John speak about. They are done a little differently in the county than they are in the city. So I wanted to clarify on that.
Hey, Richard. Richard, are you, I see that you're on probably a landline.
Yes, sir.
Are you using a speakerphone or is the headset up to your face?
Is that better?
Is that better?
I I think so, let's let's try that, because you were kind of uh swimming in a s- in a fishbowl there for.
Oh, I'm sorry, is it better?
Yeah, that's way better.
Okay, um so what I was saying, well, I don't know what you guys caught of that. But what I was saying is basically the differences between how Plumas County does rate increases compared to the City of Bertola. In in Plumas County, they they base our rate increases off of revenue. So they use a refuse rate index in the county uh that actually goes off of a operating ratio between eight and twelve percent. In the City of Bertola, we use the CPI index, which is based off the Bureau of Labor Statistics, Energy Information, so on and so forth, off of those indexes. So those are, you know, it's it's not apples to apples on how those rate increases are 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 done. Um obviously, those increases were lower uh than what we s- what we're seeing this year in the City of Bertola. Due to the fact, like you said, John, uh expenses are going up astronomically um throughout the United States. Uh we're seeing it pretty heavy in fuel uh in our area. I believe fuel went up forty-two percent uh this year. So you know, tho- those are a couple of things that are really triggering this increase. You know, we're never excited to come in for an increase uh that's sizable. Uh but we do have to operate uh and perform and and pay for pay for uh, you know, expenses along the way. So um like you had mentioned, John, we did have an increase last year that was capped at five percent uh through our contract. Uh it is in the contract to be able to petition the city council uh for an increase that did roll over into a higher uh adjustment uh that we're looking at today. So if it, you know, when we look at these numbers, and I don't know how Tom uh if Tom wanted to talk about it at all, but it looked as if the city was pretty much in agreeance with uh uh the the three different uh CPI adjustments, one being eleven point five nine percent. The other two being for the uh prior year rollover and then the third being for tipping fee. Uh so those were all agreeance and that came to sixteen point eight five percent. So that's what that's what we're looking at. There is an additional one point two five percent that we would be looking to also receive. Uh and the reason that was was to cover the expenses uh that we've been paying at the Delacre Transfer Station and tipping fees uh since July to, and that would carry July to January of this year. When our CPA put that number together, that one point two five percent together, what they had done was they used a two-year average and they s- off of what we typically uh pay uh in tipping fees at the Delacre Transfer Site and spread that out over the course of a year. So I did notice that the city was confused on that, uh understandably so. So what we did was we looked at that and the one point two five percent would carry until then the next time we would come in for an increase in fees and then we could adjust it off of that at that point. Uh but what it's doing is we have that on there to compensate us back for lost revenue that we paid out in additional tipping fees from July to January.
Richard, this is.
Well, that that was a lot of information, wasn't it?
Okay, this is Bill Powers. I have one, just one clarification if I might, uh for the public, since our public is not in the room, is uh online. Would you explain what tipping fees means?
Uh John, can you can you speak for him? I'm I'm having a hard time hearing him.
Yeah, Ri- um sorry, Richard. Councilmember Powers uh would like to know if you could uh articulate to the public who's joining us tonight uh what tipping fees are.
Uh yes, sir. Um so what a tipping fee is, when we take a load of garbage uh through a compactor truck, a garbage truck uh or a roll-off truck, and we take it to the Delacre Transfer Station, uh it is weighed at that site and when the what we pay to dump there is is called the tipping fee. So we weigh our material, we dump on the floor of the Delacre Transfer Site, and we have to pay Intermountain Disposal County Division to dump at that transfer site. And that that fee is a, you know, i- is a pretty good amount of money. So it's looking at like ninety-four dollars a ton is what we're paying to dump out there at Delacre. And that is what a tipping fee is. So it's it's basically paying to dump at the Delacre Transfer Site.
Thank you.
Richard, this is Councilmember Piler. I I I just wanted to ask, is it intended for IMV to stand firm on the request or you wanted to settle for maybe something lower? You know, because it 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 is a significant uh increase, as well as when we look at our our citizens up for toll. You know, we're all struggling, so I just wanted to pose that question.
Yes, absolutely. And it's a good question. And and the reason I would say yes, I would stick to that number would, uh the reason being is this is a national CPI index. So this is something that they're taking into consideration, all the expenses that we're paying. So with the rollover that we had from last year, the two point uh seven two percent, we carried all last year without receiving that uh in that increase. So it, you know, it already put us kind of behind. So what I'm afraid is going to happen is if we don't receive the the increase that we need, it's going to put us further behind and 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 could be detrimental to the services that we provide. So, you know, our number one game plan is always to provide the best service um that we can to the City of Bertola without eliminating services or coming in in front of the council and having to change things uh because we just can't afford it anymore. So basically, it's kicking the can down the road. And that's that's something that, you know, like I said earlier, you know, we don't, we we don't like increases. But they're a part of the of the business plan. So without these increases, uh you do fall behind uh and then you get into a bind. Uh the worst-case scenario for us was to be getting to a spot where we just couldn't afford to do it. And that would become, you know, detrimental to the public health and safety of the City of Bertola. So we we do understand that the the increases i- is higher. It it does jump up the price a little bit, uh but it's still, when we do look at this increase in fees with this increase, uh the city residents would still be paying eighty-five percent less than the 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 people in Plumas County. So, you know, they're still got a really good rate. It helps Intermountain Disposal continue to do what we're doing on a on a weekly basis inside the city. And then hopefully next year, you know, it with uh if everything inflation comes down, you know, the CPI index can go either way. You know, it can it can go a negative number two. This year, it just jumped out at, you know, at us uh as high as, you know, surprised us as much as it did you guys.
Well, thank you, Richard. Another question is, eh, can you kind of give us a ballpark figure as to one household, what that increase would look like as far as uh the dollar amount?
Yeah, so it would jump, it would go from thirteen fourteen a month to fifteen fifty-two. So basically, you're looking at about a fifty-five cent a week increase.
What did you say to Councilmember Piler again, Richard? How much?
It it would be, for a thirty-two gallon waste cart right now, would be thirteen dollars and fourteen cents a month. At thirteen dollars and fourteen cents.
That happens thirteen thirteen, so it's thirteen fourteen, and then it's going to go up to.
It would go up to fifteen fifty-two. The one five five.
So it's fifteen.
So I I I, you know, we we do realize, you know, it 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 seems like a lot when you look at the eighteen percent, sixteen percent. But obviously, the cost of business is uh is getting astronomically more expensive every single day. So, you know, we, I think it would be to do, you know, beneficial for everybody involved uh to try to get that increase, you know, carried, you know, ta- taken into effect.
Okay, I have another question. Since you're at different figures, you're quoting different figures in what you've sent to us on your rates effective January first uh form, can you tell me what mean waste?
Okay, well, maybe you might be looking at the one can rate. I was looking at thirty-two gallon waste cart. I don't.
I was too. The thirty-two gallon waste cart on on your form, you say the current rate is thirteen thirteen.
It's thirteen thirteen?
Yes, and you said it was thirteen fourteen.
Oh, it it could be, you know, I just wrote it down kind of quick, maybe my sloppy handwriting here. I I apologize for that.
It's fifteen thirty-five, and you said it was fifteen fifty-two.
That's that's correct. And that's and that's what we'd be looking at for the standard uh minimum service for the City of Bertola.
One that's written or the one that you quoted?
I'm sorry, I couldn't I couldn't hear. John, what what was that?
Uh she wants to know if it's the one you wrote in the information that was given to us that's accurate or what you just quoted.
Okay, I gotta find what exactly I had put down on that. All right, I gotta find it here in front of me. Pat, I may have to come back to that because I don't have that right in front of me for whatever reason. So what which which page are you looking at, Pat?
It is on, oh, there's no page number on it. It's Intermountain Disposal twenty twenty-three rate increase, rates effective January first twenty twenty-three. Up on approval, and it's commercial residential can rates.
Is that is that something, John, that the city submitted or was that from me?
This would be info from you guys.
No, that's incorrect. That, this is Tom Valentino.
No, this from Tom, yeah, this is Tom.
Yeah, that those rates that are in the staff report are the ones that we prepared.
Okay.
Thirteen thirteen.
And and the difference is in Richard's example, on the thirty-two gallon waste cart, we show fifteen thirty-five, Richard's asking for something more for the one point, for the six-month period that they were paying higher fees at the transfer station, the tipping fee, if you will. We did not include that because we disagreed with what they presented to us uh because there was no proposal on the sunset, it was just uh a one-year sunset with that rate. There's five years to go on a rate, so we didn't feel that that was appropriate the to have in there. There was no qualifier on that, they were just requesting that for the one year. Now also point out that we did not get the official request from them until October of this year. I think it was October tenth somewhere in there. Well, that's why we staff left that that additional one point two five percent out for the disposal component of the uh refuse collection.
Okay. Is this, Richard, uh based upon the garbage that you're picking up in the city or all of the um houses and commercial businesses in the city?
Yeah, so this would be for residential and commercial collection in the City of Bertola. And and while it's across the board, so recycling would go up too.
Okay, for every house, whether they have garbage or not?
Uh I'm sorry, what was that now?
For every residence, whether they have garbage or not?
Well, it's it's mandatory in the city. So un- unless they're not an occupied unit, yes, they would be paying the minimum service.
You want to hear from Tom?
Okay.
See, he has a more comment.
Tom, I don't know if you heard that, but uh the council would like to know if you have some uh comments regarding this before they deliberate.
Well, I I would say that I think that uh Intermountain uh and city staff were in agreement on the CPI fuel increase uh rate of eleven point five nine uh percent for the year-over-year period from August twenty twenty-one to August twenty twenty-two. And then also the uh rollover from the prior year increase, uh which is two point seven two percent. So I think we're in agreement there. Uh the transfer station rate increase, we're not a hundred percent comfortable with. We had requested additional information from IMV uh for whatever reason, they didn't want to provide that to us. Specifically, we were asking for their certified financial statements that we could review at our at our convenience rather than go into their office. I will remind the council, three years ago, we had a similar situation uh with a transfer station increase, a fee increase. Uh we requested their most recent copy of their certified financial statement. Then we didn't receive that at that time, and that was that was three years ago, uh just about to the date. I don't know if they've had a chance to go through their rates, uh but they you know, the the, you know, sometimes we differ by pennies uh because of rounding errors, but I think we're pretty close, at least on the CPI fuel increase and the rollover from uh twenty, from the prior prior year calculation.
So Tom, to clarify, um we're in agreement in terms of how the calculations were done for the eleven point five nine and then the two point seven two rollover, which would be a total of fourteen point three one percent. We're we're in agreement of how it was calculated, correct?
Correct, I believe so.
Okay.
Unless Richard has a the uh uh wants to dispute that, but I think we're, I think we're fine with that. I think you mentioned it earlier too.
Okay.
Yes, and I and I would also like to make comment. So when it came to reviewing of the compiled financial statements um in our contract, it does state that they are supposed to be reviewed in our office. Tom is correct, in two thousand nineteen, we did submit the city uh the compiled financial statements at that time. Uh but that was due to COVID. So, you know, we couldn't go in, they couldn't come here. So the only way that we could get around that was actually submit those via email.
That that's incorrect, Richard. COVID would, the COVID didn't start till March of twenty twenty.
Okay, um well, the there the that was the reason that I was told that that had took place.
Well, that's incorrect.
Yeah, so there, but uh other than that, it is contractually binding that the city comes to IMV's office to review those reports. And we have reasons for that, is because we've had information get out. Uh it is proprietary information. Uh we have offered for the city staff or the designated to come to the office to take a look at that. Uh that has not been done. Uh we offered that, I mean, for a year, and we still haven't gotten that to anybody to come over here. So I don't think Intermountain Disposal should be punished for a lack of, you know, city staff coming in and taking a look at that.
Let me uh.
And they're still available. City staff can come over here tomorrow and take a look at that.
So uh I'm I'm gonna go ahead and provide some information regarding that. The uh just the contract language, we'll just address that first. We we aren't required to go to their office. We may, if we want to, if we decide that a visit to their office to inspect the documents that they provide to us in the limited time and location would be a fruitful visit. Yes, we do that, but it's not required at all. It says it right there. The word may is different than the word shall. The uh well, I kind of forget what uh what else I I'm m- my mind was remembering in the past when I was still here in a different capacity and we discussed the the need to have to go to, the city staff having to go to the office to review the documents, but the county doesn't have that requirement at all for some reason. And um I I, this is sort of the first I heard from IMV, the reason that they want the county or the city to come there because information was leaked or whatever. I don't know how to respond to that, but that isn't, I mean, if it happened, it happened, I guess. But that's not something that would happen, or that's the reason, that's not acceptable to me. But that's not something that would happen, or that's the reason. That's not acceptable to me, because that wouldn't happen. And if information was here and we reviewed it here and gave it back to IMD, it does not become subject to a public records request. It's not information that we have here in our possession. So that sort of, um, uh, fear is not justified in my book. Um, and it takes a lot more to review financial documents. You don't just read a P and L. When you audit, we'll just use the term loosely here, audit financial documents, you look at what you have, and you don't know what you're gonna ask for until you look at what you have. And if you're sitting in an office, uh, well, in, in IMD's office, and you're just provided what, what they want to provide you, P and L's, whatever, I think Susan could probably, if she wants to, share some of the experience that they had when they had to do this. Bottom line is, the manner in which they want us to review their financial documents, um, it, it doesn't make any sense for us to do it. It's kind of a waste of staff time, and it's, it's a silly little, uh, kind of event to, to do. Also, to, regardless of what you find, let's just assume it's all justified. It's still down to what you guys decide what the rate increase is gonna be. So there's a lot of chit chat for nothing. And a lot of, uh, you know, posturing for basically what we're, what the council wants to, wants to decide to do to keep IMB, uh, working. They do, they do a really good job at, at picking up the garbage. They worked with us really well with our community cleanup program. Um, I do have to say that there's a lot of room for improvement in respect to their billing, their responsiveness to customers, um, and, uh, the confusion in some of the billing. And we don't need to get into specifics there, but, but it is time-consuming just for us alone to, to, to determine what we were billed with, with certain things, but, but we do get, and this, this doesn't have necessarily everything to do with the rate increase, but it, it, there's a big picture of, you know, the whole, the whole scenario. I do receive, I don't keep track of how much time I spend on everything, because we just have to do everything. But there isn't a week that goes by that a customer doesn't call me and complain about the billing, and normally they're right. And they're not getting the right information from IMB. And I'm not saying anyone is being horrible or mischievous or anything about that. It's just, there is room for improvement there, and hopefully going, if you, going in the future, we can all work together to make sure that that side of their treatment to the public is compliant with their franchise agreement and just, uh, reasonable in in ordinary business. I think I provided enough information that, uh, and so, uh, it, it's really not necessary to, to, to review your financial documents because the, the, the rate increase request is derived, uh, sort of differently anyway, so. It's not really a, a conversation that, in my opinion, is necessary. I'll put, I'll put a pin in that one.
Yes. So I would like, I would also like to make a comment if I could. Um, obviously, you know, we, we hear what you're saying, John. Um, and there has been more than a time or two, uh, where somebody had an issue. Uh, we, you know, we obviously hear the same problems before they come to you guys and complain because they couldn't get it resolved uh, over owing money for a bill. Um, and we do understand that. And I have worked diligently with the city of Portola since two thousand and twenty, uh, through the infrastructure committee. Um, we, we, we gained a lot of ground. Uh, we got, we got a, a long way on trying to make everything transparent. And so that when we, when somebody, a customer had come to the city, the city knew exactly what Intermountain disposal was doing and vice versa. So we were, we were going down that road at a pre- pretty fast pace, uh, until the last city manager left. And once you took in, into the internship, you know, obviously you gotta get caught up. So everything kind of just got halted at that point. So I would, I would love very much to be able to get back together with the infrastructure committee, get that ball rolling again, so that we can have, you know, some of these things that, you know, are irritants, get resolved. Because along with the city, you know, I do not want to hear that on my end either. You know, I would, I would much rather it be, this is how it's done, this is how we do things, this is the ordinance, this is what our contract says. Very, very clear, plain and simple, very easy to process. So when we do have hiccups in the road, it's either caused by past relations, uh, past managers. Um, we could blame it on a lot of different things, but things have been changed through the years that have muddied the waters. And I have tried to work with the infrastructure committee very well, and I thought we were moving very well on getting some of those waters cleaned up, so that there is transparency. So everybody knows what's going on and is very clear and cut forth. So I would look forward to, um, you know, engaging in those conversations again.
Hi, which is Bill, uh, as an infrastructure committee. Uh, and I agree with you that we, uh, have met and made progress along the way. And that there are still, um, issues to resolve. And, um, we'll, we will, um, we'll keep it open, we'll keep moving forward. Um, it'll be nice to get back to this issue and tonight. But I think it's good that we all turned a little bit about, uh, getting together and hearing everybody's side to this issue and realizing that it's only for the public interest that we do what we do. So, um, with that, we will have some changes, uh, in the first of the year. We also have to look into the key, uh, process, but we can explain a little bit about that to the public as well. Um, as we always have to be. But, um, I think we'll see some changes right at the first of the year, uh, that will uh, enter in on some of these, uh, questions that are still unresolved at this point. Yeah, let's just keep, keep rolling forward.
There is a public comment. I don't know if you're ready to take those yet.
I think we are.
Okay, Ashley Sims.
Hello, I would actually like to know, um, Richard, um, what is your gross profit before requested increase? Increase? And isn't your truck manned by one person now? And do you get your fuel at a wholesale rate? Yes.
Address, Richard, you have to address the council.
Oh, okay. That's fine. Um, I would like to ask the council to please ask Richard what his gross profit is before the requested increase. And isn't his truck manned by one person now? And do you get your fuel at a wholesale rate? Thank you.
I don't know that the council is gonna require Richard to answer that question, nor is it relevant to this particular topic. Am I correct in assuming that? Okay.
Any other public comment?
I'm a salesman. I'm looking at, uh, what's right down here, and the option that we have, um, where it says approved, uh, twenty twenty-three rate increase somewhere between five and sixteen point eight five.
Well, from what I've heard in the discussion so far, um, is we have those items that through uh, CPI and things that are solid, we got about fourteen one percent, uh, lock, you know, locked down. And we still have some questions and some things to do with the remainder.
I'll clarify what I think you're, the math you're doing. So we were just using one item and the, the thirty-two gallon as a, um, so what Tom Valentino said that, that we are in agreement with the calculations that he, that he, uh, indicated, and that equals fourteen point three one percent as opposed to the sixteen point eight five request. What that means, if you have a thirty-two gallon, is it's a dollar eighty-eight more a month, as opposed to two twenty-two, so it's a thirty-four cent difference that we're talking about. In, in regards to, uh, the, you know, the difference, the discrepancy, we'll call it, between what staff agrees of the calculations and what IMD claims. And I don't know if thirty-four cents a month is a, is a problem with the council or with IMD. So that's just information for you guys, too. And there is one more public comment, it looks like. Do you want that comment?
Yes.
Okay, Lindsey.
Thank you. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, the city council, IMD has a monopoly on the city and area. There are no other options for the citizens. According to a survey conducted by Pearl Mayor in May of twenty twenty-two, the average base salary for employees increased by four point eight percent. Between two thousand two and twenty twenty-two, the average base salary increase was typically about three percent. A five percent increase is more than the average household increase, and anything more than that would be a significant hit to household income when everyone else is hurting from price increases and just about everything else. It is mandatory for all Portola residents to have this disposal service. So this significant increase would negatively impact all Portola residents. Thank you.
We're taking a quick break.
We're taking a quick break.
Just, we're taking a quick break. We, less than five minutes. Um, Richard is still on, so we're, we're not gonna mute. We're just taking a quick break. One of the council members had to step out for a second. Did you have something to ask Richard? Is that okay? Go to wait. I'm leaving us unmuted, contrary to a public comment from someone. Are we back in session? I think we, uh, stopped where Councilmember Oles had a question for Richard. We'll give him a second.
Yes, I'm here.
Richard, it's the Oles. I was wondering how many gallons fuel your fleet burns a month? Yeah, that is.
How many fi- gallons of fuel? So we are doing, let's see here. Let me do the quick calculations on that right in front of me. We are doing around five hundred and fifty gallons a month, which is right about thirty-three, thirty-five hundred dollars a month. Yeah, fi- fuel, fuel has, is, has really put a hurt this year. It's, it's been well, it's went up forty-two percent.
Is that pretty strong?
Are we still waiting?
Yeah, Richard, uh, we, we want you to do the math again. Uh, our contractor, Mrs. Blaiman, she, she thinks maybe that's way too low.
Uh, hey, Richard, my insulation company with only three trucks burns that much.
Yeah, so I was doing on the, I was lowballing that for sure.
Yeah.
I was, uh, yeah, I don't have my fuel, my fuel in front of me. Um, but I could probably gather that information up here. Um, but yeah, it's, uh, that's probably definitely on the low side for right now.
I had one more comment, Richard, and, and sort of in your favor, I would say, uh, it's to everyone's favor, I think. That I was reading today, uh, two different items, uh, mostly about the cost of diesel and the scarce, scarcity, scarcity. Think of words, yeah, any, any of those three words is good. Uh, scarcity of diesel uh, production is embarrassing, and that's part of the reason that our supply chains in every department uh, from groceries to, uh, dry goods to everything else is in such disarray. Um, and I'm sure the, your fleet is gonna suffer the same consequences of where the suppliers sometimes have to go to two or three different ports to get enough to deliver to their customers. And that, of course, has been bred prices all over the place. And at the same time, the inflation rate may start going down sooner than I think. Uh, there are just other consequences you will want, so that's my other comment before we go on.
Yes, and that, and that's what I would agree with you absolutely a hundred percent. And that's what I was looking at when, when we come into, you know, right now, we're sitting in this boat, uh, and two thousand, and going into the twenty twenty-four year, it may be a completely different animal. You know, that, that could come down. Uh, we could see a decrease in fees, uh, but we don't have a crystal ball. So what we're looking at right here, right now, is what the, the CPI is telling us, um, is, is what is needed. Uh, when we look at this again in twenty twenty-four, for the twenty twenty-four calendar year, um, we, we could see a decrease, uh, which we would hope to see. Uh, but right now, we're, we're looking at definitely astronomical prices for fuel, um, and, and all the other things that go along with fuel. You know, anything that we get, tires, oil, um, all that, you know, is, is controlled by the, you know, that fuel component.
Here, Tom Valentino, what is for the winning, fourteen point three one percent, and IMD wants sixteen point eight five.
And I probably want to clarify for Tom. He, he is, he is just saying that we agree with those calculations. I don't know that Tom provided a recommendation of a rate increase. Uh, that's just what staff has agreed that calculation, with those calculations, fourteen point three one would match what's in the franchise agreement and all the calculations that are, so maybe that's a number that you would be looking at for that purpose.
Yeah, and we, but we do want to take in consideration, you know, the, that sixteen eight five is a direct reflection of the tipping fees that we have, uh, at the Delco transfer site as well. So, you know, if we went below that, um, then we're not getting that, you know, the true cost of what we actually need, uh, to, to be, you know, current. So that difference between the fourteen and the sixteen eight five is that actual, you know, two point five four percent at the Delco transfer site. And that's not counting the one point two five that we've already been spending since July. So what I would feel is the sixteen eight five is the magic number.
There might be a question. There might be a question here as well for clarification, Richard. When you were, uh, answering the question about, um, Councilmember Powers' question about tipping fees, you did mention that that was, I'm gonna totally paraphrase here, but that was the amount or the, uh, when you take the trash and you dump it, you have to pay the the transfer station. And that's a simplified way of stating that. Is that true? Is that what the tipping fee is about? The cost?
Yes.
Okay, and you guys, you guys do own the transfer station?
If the Intermountain, well, we don't own the transfer site. The transfer station is is owned by Plumas County.
But the business is.
Intermountain Disposal County Division operates it, yes.
Okay, I think there was some question regarding that part of the council.
Yeah, so it's it's a, it's a completely different, you know, agreement. Completely different. It's Intermountain Disposal is a corporation, uh, Intermountain Disposal, Plumas County Division operates that facility. Uh, the city of Division has to pay for anything that we collect in the city of Portola, whether it's roll-off, commercial, residential, uh, we have to pay to dump at that facility.
Richard, has have there been changes at the Lockwood, uh, plant as far as you disposing on our waste?
Yes, uh, Lockwood rates go up every single year. They use the Western Regional Index. Uh, and I believe that was close to ten percent this this lot this year.
Thank you.
And that and that's, you know, if you're in in perspective, that's the, you know, the final destination for waste, you know? They push it into a hole and bury it. We, you know, we got a lot of transportation involved.
Yeah, and I guess I would make the motion again to, uh, approve the two thousand twenty-three rating, because somewhere complete five percent and sixteen point eight five. And so so I would make the motion after what I heard tonight, uh, at the fourteen point three one percent.
No, second.
For me, I mean, it, looking at the city of Portola, the residents and and I M D, who does a great job as well in the situation that we're in, our economic.
So we have a first and a second. Did you, given the nature of this item, did you want to ask for any other discussion or do you want to call for the vote? Okay. So we have a first and a second roll call vote. Councilmember Tyler. Councilmember Powers.
Yes.
Councilmember Olds.
Yeah.
Mayor Morton.
Yeah.
And Air Proten Cooley is absent. So that has been approved. Um, Richard, uh, I I believe Tom is ready to prepare the necessary document documentation for the two eighteen process. We can speak later offline. Um, uh, hopefully I M D is going to just accept this or uh, we'll talk about the process later if you're if you're not wanting to.
Yes, yes, we can discuss that.
Okay.
You know, obviously, you know, we were looking to get closer to that sixteen point eight five. Uh, I feel like we're carrying almost another five percent. Um, but we we can definitely discuss, uh, pushing this forward. I do, I do appreciate you guys' time, um, in getting to where we got tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you might be up now, Mayor Morton.
Oh, I am. Okay. Next is, um, seven.
And I do see that Carrie Curtis is on the line, too. She probably had an intention of, uh, joining in the conversation.
Okay. Number seven is L E S S G funding request. Request for additional funding to complete the work of the L E S S G meeting, which is the local emergency services study group. And, uh, read this report for those who are on one, if they haven't received. Since, um, before the Ad-Hoc Fire Committee, I have city representatives to the local emergency services. Request for funding to complete the work of the L E S S G. The city has previously authorized the expenditure of twenty thousand dollars as its contribution among the four participating agencies to fund a contract with Plan West Partners LLC to produce a feasible study on the formation of a new fire district. A plan of work and an application to LAFCO. The contract amount is fifty-seven thousand dollars, which is toll paid by the participating agencies. The work is now either complete or authorized and in progress. Performance under contract is on time and within budget. With two substantial expenses remain in the process of taking the proposed district to a ballot for approval by the electorate. First, informing the public about the proposed district, admitting comments and answering questions. The proposal includes mailings, public meetings, and a web and social media presence. The cost is approximately thirty thousand dollars and will add to the contract with Plan West Partners LLC. Second, while Plumas County LAFCO has substantially reduced its fees for our new district formation project, eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars must accompany the application to LAFCO, including in report our details of each of these expenditures. Your Ad-Hoc Fire Committee requests approval of an expenditure of twenty thousand dollars by city as its contribution to funding the remaining expenses of the L E S S G. Any unexpended funds will be returned to participating agencies in proportion to their respective investments submitted by community members Pat Morton and Tom Cooley. Twenty thousand. That was the first one. Yeah, well, I hope really it's not that much, but it we figured rather than coming back and keep asking for more money, we just get enough some instead of giving terms, return what's left in there because the outreach program and the LAFCO, we have to pay, uh, eight thousand five hundred and fifty dollars to LAFCO. And LAFCO has already reduced their fee by twelve thousand dollars. Yeah. But then we have to go get outreach materials and everything. So public awareness and
So there is a hand up for a public comment if you wanted to. Ashley Sims.
Yes, Ashley. Can we wait for my public co- can we wait until Ms. Martin is finished speaking for public comment, if that's okay?
Well, I think I'm done for now.
Or are you done? Okay, perfect. I have a, I have a bunch of questions regarding this, and I'm hoping you guys can answer, um, all of them. Um, and it it is in regards to the the subject at hand. Um, how much money has been given to Leesig so far? Why did you not go with Plan West? They said that they could do public outreach for fifteen thousand dollars. If this reorganization of fire services is so wonderful, then why do you have to pay someone to speak for you? Has this PR consultant company been to the meetings that the public has been denied access to? Why are you using taxpayer money to push what you want? Um, what you have told them to, to the public? Where is the funding for the consultant coming from? Why is there a need for a public relations consultant? How and why were the consultants hired? Was this a bid situation, B I D? Um, is there a cap on spending on this reorganization of fire services project? And I would also like to records request again the meeting minutes from the Ad-Hoc Committee that of the, for the city of Portola that goes to the Leesig meetings and, um, who brought this P PR consultant in for the reorganization? Thank you. Oh, don't don't mute me, John, if in case, you know, council has questions on what I said, please. Thank you.
On mute, you need it. How would you like to address that? I mean, I can address some. I don't even know if you want to. I mean, some of these are just, uh, provoking provocation questions, so some are.
What I would like to do, if we could, uh, is sit down and write each question out and give them an answer. I think Carrie Curtis is on there, um. I think it'd be better.
As in right now or because Ashley Sims is the only person asking, do you want us to provide like to tomorrow or something in the form of a or right now? Because some of these are just opinionated questions just for opinion answers. So those are not a valid thing. Some of them I can probably answer. I'm sure Carrie can answer. And she, uh, shotgun thirteen questions to us in a matter of thirteen seconds. So we, I I tried to take some short.
I tried to get it written down, too. That's why I was thinking.
Oh, I can address a couple right now if you want, just to get them. Yeah, but but.
And Carrie can probably answer some of those, too.
Like the question number two, why is Plan West not being used? Well, they they are being used.
They are.
Yeah, yeah, they're just going to be subbing out some of the work to another organizations.
And then professional services do not need to last.
Right? That was question nine, I believe.
Yeah.
Um, and so I didn't are you asking Carrie if she wants to weigh in? Is that what you're?
Well, you know, maybe what we should do.
Okay, yeah, Carrie just sent a, yeah, Carrie sent a message that says she's happy to answer questions.
I will have to ask them there, too. We asked them.
Well, some that we don't remember. Yeah, yeah. Um, let's see if, do you want to ask Carrie if she follows some of those questions?
Yeah.
Carrie, did, were you able to?
I I didn't get them all because I didn't, I wasn't prepared to write them down, but I do want to say that, um, the stated funds that were in the report, uh, the fifty-seven thousand that's already been paid to Plan West Partners plus the request for thirty thousand for the, uh, to, um, to pay Plan West Partners or to supplement that contract uh, for public outreach consultant and the eight thousand plus for the LAFCO fees is the total amount. There would be no other expenses coming in. So what you're seeing or what what Pat uh, Morton read is, um, all that, uh, the, um, the committee has, um, is anticipating as expenses. Um, as far as, um, you know, where the consultant came from, um, you know, it, uh, Plan West had a proposal in their, uh, contract, uh, their their, uh, their proposal to the, uh, fire study group. And that included, um, an option for public outreach. However, the public outreach piece of that was, um, did not include mailing of, uh, postcards and flyers that would be necessary to ensure that all voting constituents have the information when we are hosting town hall meetings. Um, so it what's driving the additional fifteen thousand dollars for consultant fees is related to mailing and postage expense. Uh, Plan West is managing the consultant, uh, as a subcontractor of their contract. And, uh, will be ensuring that the information that is being presented to the public is accurate and concise. The, um, L E S S G will not be, uh, directing or managing the consultant. And I'm, I know there were some other questions there, but I'm hoping that I've answered, uh, maybe the most important ones.
There was a question that we all know the answer to, um, but maybe you can. Why are taxpayer dollars being spent on this? Did you want to take that one on, Carrie?
Sure, sure. Well, you know, the taxpayer dollars are be being spent because of the condition of fire services throughout the country and in particular in eastern Plumas County. Um, fire services, uh, are not sustainable as they are today. And the work that's been done by L E S S G to create the partnerships necessary to create a regional fire department in eastern Plumas County requires funding, and that funding is coming from the four agencies that are participating in the effort. And so why tax dollars are being being utilized? They're being utilized because we have an obligation to provide fire and emergency services through our constituents. And doing nothing is not an option.
And I'd probably like to add to because I I sort of know why Ashley asked certain questions. Um, we want to add that it's perfectly legal to use taxpayer dollars for informational purposes that is is, uh, planned to be used or spent on. When it comes to this item being on a ballot where, uh, there has to be a campaign, just like the last election, that's when taxpayer dollars are no longer able to be spent, and that's a whole different, uh, it's a whole different process, but taxpayer dollars right now are spent perfectly legally. Uh, this is how it's done everywhere, and it's for informational purposes only. So.
Yep, that's correct, John.
And I I think, um, why we we the city council, um, approved of entering into this process with the other districts, uh, just for some more information, uh, is to anticipate, um, two things. One is where we were headed, which was not in a good place. Um, and all the districts were not performing adequately and had the potential of going completely out of business and not providing the services. And then on the other end, uh, and our anticipated optimism that if we have a viable fire service that covers the entire area, that insurance costs are under them and that response times are going to go down. They're already good under contract and we want even better. And that the entire service, uh, will be a huge benefit, not, not a minor benefit to the cities and to the other districts, but a huge benefit to the, to our lifestyle.
Ashley does have, she probably wants to clarify.
Ashley.
Yes, thank you so much, um, Carrie, for answering those questions. I actually, um, have a statement to also add to the questions that I did ask and that you guys somewhat mostly answered, and I really do appreciate that. And, um, I actually spoke with Cal Fire today and they said that it is not a state law or a requirement of cities or counties to provide fire services. And in the event that the districts are dissolved, this Cal Fire and the state would actually take over. Um, I would appreciate it, John, if you did not speak to me and speak for me or assume what I am saying because you do not know me. Um, and I, I do, really do appreciate those clarifying answers though. Um, so one of the questions that was not answered, I asked, is there a cap on spending? So are, are you guys done? Is that in writing? Are you going to continue to, you know, use more taxpayer monies to fund this thing? I mean, we, we've seen numerous times where you guys have said, hey, we're not going to spend any more, but you have in some other situations not related to this one. So I just want to know, is there a cap on it? We are done because as per the documents provided, it says, hey, if we need more money, we can come and ask the council for more, more money. Um, and the document that the, I think it's Rollins PR consulting provided that was in the agenda packet tonight. I would just, um, I would like the spending to be done. And I'm sure a lot of the taxpayers that will, will be footing this, um, would like that as well. Um, nobody mentions how much the taxes are going to go up. They will go up a hundred dollars for residential, $200 for commercial. And then we haven't even, you know, considered the fact that some properties are recreational. Um, I know that my old landlord, one of his parcels in town is listed as recreational, but it's right behind, you know, his, that's con, commercial, commercially listed residential property. Um, so there are, there's quite a few concerns with this and the cost. Um, I know that I've been told before that by one of the council members that the fire insurance will not go down. So I just, um, I would also like to see the report from Plan West on, you know, what they're, what they've said, I guess, as well. Thank you.
I can, I can answer the one about the money. This $20,000 we're asking for right now, we don't anticipate that it will all be used. We think that, uh, some of it will be returned to the city. And after that, when it actually goes to a vote, uh, the city does not pay for that. Taxpayer money does not be used for that. So that will have to come somewhere else. Yes, Susan.
I just wanted to clarify that that, it's not like we're writing somebody a $20,000 check, dollar check, and they're going to give us anything back. The city through this whole process has been the steward of these funds from all four of the agencies and we have kept track of that. Uh, so the money doesn't just automatically, 20,000 isn't just going out. So we're tracking all those things, uh, for the multi-agency cooperation.
And then also as far as, I think, um, Carrie could probably answer the, you know, question. Public property is taxed. There's several different ways it's taxed, the same way as county taxes for your, um, property. Is Carrie still on there?
I am, I am, Pat. And, uh, the, um, the way the determination of the um, proposed tax was determined was by using the, the county assessor's data. So the county assessor has already designated parcels for their particular use. And that's how the, um, fire tax would be applied is based on how the county has, uh, defined the use of that, that parcel. I'd also like to point out that the city is not the, is not necessarily footing the whole bill of this next phase of funding that's needed. Uh, all four agencies are going to their boards or their representatives. Uh, the, um, L E S S G representatives are going back to their boards and asking for funding um, to support this final phase that's needed. And, uh, just based on, um, you know, what, you know, I potentially know and maybe how things will play out. Um, I don't know for sure because this is the first, um, the first funding request that's been made by one of the agencies. But I anticipate that, um, there'll be sufficient funds to cover the remainder of the, um, expenses, uh, with as, with, with more than likely, I would say, more than likely, uh, funds will be returned to each agency.
Okay, thank you.
Make the most of the expenditure of $20,000.
And we have a second, wait, councilman Powers? Roll call, council member Tyler.
Yes.
Council member Powers.
Yes.
Council member Oles. Just trying to trick you guys. Mayor Morton.
Yes.
Okay. And absent is Mayor Pro tempoli. Thank you. Like we just have one more.
Use of ARPA funds slash senior ridge.
Okay, I'll do a brief discussion. Susan has done a lot of the heavy lifting in terms of, uh, working with the county on, on this, uh, but, uh, essentially we, you know, there's this, there's this piece of property um, that used to be called the CR Ridge. Uh, there's been all kinds of names and nicknames for it, but it's a, uh, it's a, it's a prop, it's a development that was approved several years ago. And out of all the developments that, you know, uh, there's, there's been, um, hopeful development. It's the only one that kind of moved forward and had some infrastructure in and sewer and water and a few things that were done wrong, but, uh, it, it was, it fell to the, uh, um, during the, the time where the, the world was crumbling in oh seven, oh eight, oh nine with the real estate crisis, that, that was no, uh, that they, they also had the same issues. Um, that property is sat, um, it's, it's got blight. We've done a good job of clearing out, I think now, all of the um, abandoned vehicles. Uh, there is, there's problems with infiltration of the sewer system that they, uh, installed, getting into our, just the basically rain and stormwater getting into our sewer system from that. We don't own the property. We can't control the property. Um, and, uh, knowing that, we were just kind of curious on the property and Susan, uh, reached out to the county, just asked about the, it all, it goes through these tax default, these tax sales all the time and it never sells, no one bids on them. And, um, we were sort of surprised that there's a little provision that Susan probably also discussed more specifically that because we're a city, a municipality that can, uh, that can purchase, uh, tax default properties for a public purpose, uh, you, you don't have to, as long as you have approval through the board of supervisors and tax collector, you don't have to go through the auction purpose, uh, process and you can buy it pretty cheap. Uh, as you all probably know, I don't, Susan and I are not advocates of being in the real estate business. Uh, just, we just aren't. Uh, that's, that's always frustrating for developers and the public for our opinions, but our opinions don't matter. So it's kind of an odd thing for us to be bringing this to the council when, um, when generally speaking, we don't, we don't like to buy real estate. Uh, but we're not, we're not policymakers here. However, we found that there might be some potential for this property, for the council to at least control it, get things cleaned up to, to, uh, to stop any issues that are consequential of that development into our own systems. And maybe down the road, um, you, you know, you hear all this affordable housing and all these discussions and the planning departments have these annual meetings and every 10 year meetings. And there's a lot of talk and no actions because a lot of times for small communities like this, these one size fits all affordable housing development projects with tax sharing and all these, uh, fancy processes. They try to stuff, stuff Portola in that box or places like Portola. And they just don't, they don't work. We're just, it's just a different animal, us and Portola and many other places. So there might be potential, and we don't really have a plan yet, but there could be potential with some experience that we have, that I have, um, and others to possibly start slowly creating some actual houses there. And doing it in a way where it can actually be affordable to, with the workforce, sheriffs, hospital teachers, uh, the actual workforce around here. And, uh, so that, that plan isn't, this, this isn't bark, this isn't about that plan, but it's about taking control of that property at what we hope is a really reasonable rate and ARPA funds can be used for it. So I'm just going to stop there and Susan probably has some more um, intelligent, uh, explanation as to, uh, the process and, and which we're discussing here.
So I did get in touch with Julie White at the county, um, a while ago actually, and, um, wanted to see if we can do, you know, through another tax, potential tax sale. Turns out that it's already been up for sale twice and so we don't have to do that. She sent me the application, which I believe we, uh, put in your packet. Uh, as far as the, being able to use the ARPA funds to purchase this property, uh, I read on, maybe not all 437 pages of the final regulations, but I've read enough that I, uh, I'm really convinced that it fits in with a lot of the public purposes in terms of abandoned vacant properties. Um, and the public purpose going forward. Uh, the, at first it was not, it was to, to get the properties so that it wasn't a health and safety issue for our staff as much as anything, you know, and then if sometime down the road, there's the developer who might be interested that we can, um, make sure that the house is still a little more affordable, then that obviously would be something, um, to shoot for. We certainly take a beating all the time about whether we're doing anything about housing. And I think this, this, well, it wouldn't be for parliament in the future, it could be a really good step. Um, the application has to be signed and submitted to Julie White. She then puts it on board supervisor's agenda. And, uh, and if the board supervisors approves, then it, I believe it goes to the state after that. Um, Julie's thinking maybe the whole thing would be wrapped up by next April or May in terms of just acquiring property. An acquiring title to property for a public purpose for vacant and abandoned properties is specifically stated in the ARPA funds. Uh, we originally got $460,000 in ARPA funds. We've roughly spent 90 on the cleanup so far. So there's, there's certainly, there's certainly plenty of room in the ARPA funding. Uh, all of that ARPA funding has to be committed by the end of 2024 and it has to be spent by the end of 2026. So we're well within the time of spending our funds as well. Um, not sure what else that, I don't know. Hope you read the memo from Julie White, uh, where she explains the process from her perspective and she, um, is waiting to hear what the council has to say.
Just a question for John. Could you speak with Todd, how much of infrastructure is soundable as far as water and sewer lines?
Water and sewer, uh, as far as we know, if there wasn't any work done, you know, on weekends at nights that the city didn't know about. Uh, water and sewer was done in compliance with development agreement inspections and, um, there, there are some issues. Uh, we, we did a, a smoke test, they call it a while back before I was here. And there are some areas that, uh, where the, the uprights are that need to be fixed. But for that part, very minimal, if anything, needs to be done. Um, the old developer did install, uh, propane lines that went, you know, and they did it wrong. So that, that is just going to have to be torn up. That's not a thing that you can mess with. Uh, so that's, you know, excavation work and little elbow grease. Uh, otherwise it's, it's as far as any development that hasn't been developed, it's the one that's ready for the most part. So. What was that?
Has Steve Rose had any input on this show?
We've talked to him about it. I don't know what input he would. It's legal. That's what I'm saying.
You're probably asking. And, and we don't, uh, one of you are probably going to ask this question, but we don't know exactly what the price is yet. But this action just allows the board supervisor to say, yes, the city wants to buy it. Start moving that process along and then we'll find out. And most likely it's going to be within what we were thinking. If not, we'll have to have another meeting. Yeah, then. And we will have to have another meeting anyway.
Like, I personally think it's a, it's a good opportunity for us. And then when, when you, when you look at affordable housing, what we're lacking in our town is possible daycare um, and stuff like that. So when you look at the opportunity and being a part of helping the growth of our community, uh, I think it's a good move.
Yep.
Other comment?
Looks like Ashley has a comment.
Yes, Ashley.
How much do you plan on allocating for this? For the purchase of these parcels? And does it include the parcels where all of that stuff is at? Um, next to the Loyalty Avenue apartments? And also would the boundary lines change, um, for that as well? Thank you.
Not sure what the boundary lines question is. The parcels, um, are the same parcels that I believe I sent you the map of? Uh, when you asked for something about La Jolla loans months ago? So those would be the same?
Oh, oh, no, that was just a, that was just a list, but I ask that, that boundary question because I remember when we, when I did work, um, for Ron's, uh, for the Ava program to have all of that junk removed. It was constantly a battle. Um, what I believe is what I was hearing between Plumas County, I guess battle is probably not the correct term. Um, an issue between Plumas County and Portola on who is responsible for the junk that is there. That's why I ask if the boundary lines are going to change because. That's why I ask if the boundary lines are going to change because it's kind of confusing.
Smack dab in the middle of the city. So I don't know why Plumas County would be involved in this, in these properties.
You, you know why, where I'm talking about, right? That junk right there by Loyalton Avenue Apartments?
Yeah, and it's.
Are those the lots?
It's nowhere, yeah, it's nowhere near the county of.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying.
This is part of what, you know, the whole ARPA project to spend on and having, being able to have.
Right, I, I've. I figured it was because, you know, I, I saw that as a health and safety issue and I'm like, oh, that's what, you know, they have to be doing with that. They're going to clean that up. I think that's great. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the public review of the ARPA funds for Sierra Ridge.
And if you don't mind, I'm going to say for the city manager to be able to sign the application to purchase and get it to the county.
For the city manager to go, the signed application and purchase again.
Okay, we have first and a second roll call vote. Councilmember Oles. Powers.
Yes.
Councilmember, Councilmember Piler.
Yes.
And Mayor Morton.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Cooley is absent. Okay. Looks like you have one more item left.
Meeting's adjourned at 7:52.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Good night.